Done there.
Okay. Roger start. Love program.
Call towards it. Yeah. Okay, we'll call the uh. Suppose for meeting for December twenty. The order. Well, Paul now.
Yep. President.
So, Chris Marino. If those attorney Anders help with. Todd Lee, Brandon Chrome, Bob Gunther, Chuck Sport. Believe Donnie, Ern and. Josh Hatcher both. Zoomed in. And Doug Ladd as well. Let's believe.
Great public. Public comment and the board. Thank you for the comment.
Good evening fellow board members.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I think you should fair out with. George. I have your.
Uh, just name, names fine.
I will think that. Good evening fellow board members and village pro 10 Todd Lee, I am Julie Wang of thirty six two Parkton Drive. Somerset, Wisconsin, also of seven oh one Conference Street, South Saint Paul, Minnesota. Fourteen hundred Brighton Drive, Bearaboo, Wisconsin. Two two five Third Avenue, Minneapolis, Minnesota. Seventy eight hundred and seventy eight fifty Bloomington Avenue, Bloomington, Minnesota. Seventy seven eighty flying cloud drawing and seventy four seventy five flying cloud drawing in Minnesota. Over the last forty three days, I have reached seven, what I call home, home. Um. Yet only one place I would ever call home. My beautiful community at Somerset, Wisconsin. Because no matter where we temporarily lay our home at night. Our hearts are always here in Somerset. My home and my heart were always here in Somerset over the last forty three days. At the end of the day, I want to bring up the fact that five feet on your agenda. Mike Cappers has spoken over the last several months. Um. About his roots in Somerset. And I have witnessed him time and time again, give back to this community. More than all of the current board members combined. I ask you this very question, where are you on the evening of Monday, December the twelfth? Where were you? Well, I can tell you exactly where Mike Cappers was. I, along with many of the village residents, saw him on Main Street. Where he was taking photos. With every single kid that saw Stanford at home. He was also there when we lit the Christmas tree on Main Street. He was there taking the pictures when we were decorating Christmas. He was there when we were singing Christmas carols. He was there cheering as we lit that tree. Where were all of you? Maybe you were there, I didn't see you. I was there, Mike Cappers was there, where were all of you? Why as a community are we trying to push out our most affluent community members? Amazing humans who put their money where their heart is. Why? I will say it again, Mike Cappers has proven time and time again, he loves Somerset more than any one of us. Yet we push him down and we push him aside because he is an affluent business owner. The same with John Von Pettit. He too loves Somerset more than any one of us. And continues to show us time and time again, he loves this community. But yet we push him down and we push him aside, why? Because he is also an absolute business member of this community. Mike Cappers and John Von Pettit, I'm so glad to see you. Mike Cappers and John Von Pettit give back to our community far more than any one of us. Yet, they are. There are corrupt few people in our community who try to pick the two of them together against each other. The corrupt few pick them two against each other. Two amazing men against each other, why? Well, I have a theory, ready for it? The corrupt few try to create these fires. Where? There are no fires. So we focus on the fires of these two of these wonderful godsevered men. So that we lose focus on the corruption by corrupt few. I stand you tonight and encourage you to give Mike Cappers a chance to prove to you. He is a great man who has always and will always continue to want what is best for Somerset, Wisconsin. Give him a chance. Thank you very much. I thought I don't know if you're in the state or on the board. But I promise. If you vote differently, I will take you out of this. And I will not take you out from the honor that was honored and respected. I will vote you out. We will take you out and vote you out. I'm coming for those people. Watch out. It's not a big. Do you not?
Hey, I honestly, I'm very offended right now. He's sitting there laughing, not funny at all. My name is Chris Taylor and I'm here to tell you. I know John, I know Tom and John, I know Mike, I know Tom and Mike, and I know you, and I will talk to you. What I'm here to say is that Mike, for two decades. Helped take care of my boys to be arrested and other things like this. And sitting here listening to you laugh is disgusting. It's disgusting. I can't believe it. I just cannot believe it. You don't deserve to be up there laughing. You'll get your own. Disgusting. Keep laughing. It's not funny.
No, no. Everybody. For public.
I have a public, but there's somebody else that's still wanting to. I didn't know a public community, so I thought it was good. Well, I'm just saying, I didn't want to interrupt the flow of this community. Supporting that.
People.
Hello, I'm Kristen Dunley. Um, first, I'm going to say kudos to you, the owl is lovely. Thank you, thank you, thank you. This is a great asset to the community to be able to catch the meetings at their convenience. I really appreciate you investing it and I know there's learning to it. There is also a few technical difficulties. Um, I did look online to see where there might be a link to find the reported video. But maybe tonight's the first night you're doing that. And we'll see that later. Um, because I didn't find one so far. So, um, I'm thrilled that you're doing that. I appreciate it. The community will appreciate being able to access this information. Um, and secondly, there's an agenda item that's talking about donating the Somerset Community Foundation. Um, I'm on the board of that foundation and so. I'm just hoping that when we get to that agenda item, maybe you could, um, talk about that a little bit, the, the background and. And what that might mean, um, what you're looking at. And provide some more detail. Sometimes the agenda items kind of fly by and we don't get all of the information because you discussed it elsewhere. And now you, um, are maybe doing a highlight on it. But when you get to that item, if you could, um, add some backstory, the details behind it, I do. That's all I guess.
How come? How, I'm just. Steve Goff and one other candidate. Here, there's more to let's get on the record of having some concerns. Is all and, uh. If the time comes and Mike is. To the board, my concern would be just, uh, potential voting, uh. Maybe against my business or something. I have concerns at the time I would be willing to share some of the, uh, text messages I've received from Mr. Cappers over the last two years. And some recorded phone conversations I have that of a threatening nature. This time I don't wish to share them, not on board members, may not be necessary at any time, but. I just wanted to get on the record that. The time comes, I'd be willing to share one.
So.
Okay, go ahead, sorry. I just wanted to make sure nobody was raising their hand or whatever happens here.
Day. I've done with seed flyers, but Anders saying that my address, I've been in the apartment there for close to eighteen years, wasn't a local dwelling. And I've proved otherwise. And after that, and it's a question of my relevancy through the council and election commission, I proved my, my relevance given accepted. Either between the township or the village. And, uh, what, four and one months before the election, and I would like consideration of the board. With the, uh, appointment to that seventh seat.
It's not going to be good, I remember. I went to my house there. I think. We go forward, I think you should let the people come and voice it too. If we're above the community and above the people, let them vote. If they vote against them, they fall. If they voted, they won it. Didn't you all? Off the hook, I just think it should be given to a man, I give to the community, I do find that important. I just want you to clear it and let the people make the decision. Moving forward, we want the community involved, the men to make the decision, let them vote. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yeah.
Jason asked, I grew up here and. Um, Mike spent most of my high school years chasing around me, my buddy, his dad. But he does care about the community. He, uh, working for him now at the cafe and he spent all cafe. Mike paid us all to come to food for the Thanksgiving and. He was there with us smoking twelve thirties, fifteen thirties. All on his dime and donating us. He just clearly does care about the community always, uh. Even though we weren't always. On the same page as everything, it's always been here that he cares for some. He's been here everything's been alive pretty much. Serving the town. I think he does. So I don't think.
Yeah, anybody?
Go ahead and ask, I don't, I don't not seen anybody.
Is there anybody else that has a comment?
I just want to point out that I could hear Bob really good. Everybody else is, uh, I don't know if there's a different miking system or something, but, uh, Todd, I'm really struggling to hear you.
It is. It is, I think he's talking about the, the. Cordial. No, I, I just think it's the distance. I'm looking at it right now.
Guys, I have Doug, uh. He indicates that he can't hear anything, so I don't know, Bob, you can let him out and then back in, if that'll help or not?
Yeah, if he wants to go out and come back in. That probably is going to be the easiest before I just absolutely disconnect the whole meeting. Should be my luck.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I want to share, so. Um, yeah, on the screen.
I think Brendan Forrest wants to say something like, can I try? I don't know. Okay. It's like she's trying to go out and come back in. No. Shit, I don't know. You just let Doug back in.
Doug, can you hear us?
Don't. Can't hear you.
I can barely hear you, Anders.
Got it, Donnie, Doug, what about you?
Uh, he says he can't hear you.
But Josh, you heard it, Mike?
Yeah, Josh.
Josh, can you hear?
It's just, I'm telling you.
What's up? Sorry.
Great, good, you can hear us.
Yeah, I can hear you.
All right, uh, last try for Doug, Doug, can you hear us?
Doug's going to try to call in, uh. Via the call in option, so see if that works.
She's. Doug. Bob? Does she want, does Brendan want to make a public comment or? Brendan, did you want, uh, to make a public comment? Okay, all right. We report a supplemental, minimum version. So you look for a motion in a second or three. Josh, anything else? Uh, is Doug calling in by phone?
Yeah, Doug just wanted to try to call in by phone on the Zoom option. See if that worked better or not.
Is the thirty four hundred number Doug?
I'm in now. I called it into my phone, can you hear me?
Yes.
I can hear you guys now.
All right, good.
November and December. All in favor? Discussion?
Yeah, I can give you a little discussion, I still can't hear anything.
Same. Look, I'm just gonna have to speak up.
I don't even know what the motion is or where we're at, but it's just a very mumbly, so. It's either that or I'll have to step out of this meeting because if I can't hear, I can't participate.
Why don't you slide that table, Anders, and just not have any more cable?
All right, I don't want to. It's up there, all right.
I heard Brandon clear as day.
Right, because it should be settings. Think it would be this one, we can't click it. This one? That's definitely coming through here. You should be able to. Yeah, it's coming through here.
Didn't we have mics that were set out before? I mean, we heard clear as day then.
Yeah, I tried that one, I wanted to. It just made it mute, I mean, oh, there it is. Your computer, are you?
No, we want the microphone.
Yep.
Seems like the microphone's the only one at the computer is the only one that's working.
Anybody should be able to hear us.
Now we can hear you, I can't anyway.
All right.
Sonny?
Teamwork makes the dream.
Todd, did you just ask me if you, if I could hear you, because I can't.
Yeah.
You can?
You got it.
I, I can now, yes, thank you.
Thank you, this all is really close, doesn't have to be this close still? Really intimidating.
They had to look at my belly shot. Thanksgiving was very good.
Yeah.
Hey, Brandon, can we, before the next meeting, can you help document what needs to happen so this stops?
Uh, yeah, I can, I can help, we can have like a protocol set up at the beginning to make sure we double check the audio. Yeah, I'll take it. Yeah, before the meeting, so I'll be here early, yeah, yeah, yeah.
All right.
Thank you.
There was a motion by Brandon to, uh, uh, adopt the minutes for November and December.
Seconded by Chris Marino. And all in favor? Any just.
Hi. Oh.
Okay. All opposed? Motion is passed. So now we go to now go to the committee reports? Yep. Okay. Um. First thing up, Public Works Discussion and Possible Approval of, uh, Main, Main Street Bridge Design Amendment one. Yes, our professional services agreement. So, Bob, you know how to just allow me to share my screen?
You shouldn't. You need to ask to share the screen? You may have the request.
It said share screen and it said host disabled. Otherwise, I do have handouts, but I just thought.
Use the technology if you can.
Yeah.
Multiple white participants can share simultaneously. Here you go.
We'll try.
Great.
Geez, no, okay, five different screens to share. Um. It worked.
Hit the one in the middle.
Looking good.
There we go.
All right.
Nice.
So, um, as directed at the, uh, the workshop, we went and revised the, uh. The professional service agreement for, or the, the amendment rather for the, uh. The, uh. For the bridge. Uh, the bridge fencing, to include the bridge fencing. And so based on their last meeting, I did get together with, uh, some of our bridge folks and we talked through some of the options and the pros and the cons. And we came up that within a, with a potential option for you folks, that's a little bit more decorative. Than, um. Just to your, your standard of poly coated chain link fence. And what it's showing you here is there's a railing, we wouldn't be able to put this railing on. Because it would, it would just, you know, it's not how we would have designed the deck, but that's how it was designed, whatever fifty years ago, whatever it was. And if you put the railing on, it's just, it doesn't meet ADA with requirements, okay? And so one option we were thinking about is you do a fence like this. And then you have that kind of extra decorative rail on top of it, okay? Um, this is a four bolt thing down at the, at the base here, so we'd have to, we'd have to re-engineer, you know, basically there's. The DOT recognizes two fencing options, you know, that's that, that heavier, bulkier, more expensive rail that we talked about. That sits on a full board, or, or bolt. Uh, anchorage system. And then your standard chain link fence that sits on a two bolt. But we could add another railing, do some calculations, go, go through that process. So that is an option for you to consider if you want to. What's the added cost? It would be six thousand dollars to kind of go through that effort and get it reviewed and structurally analyzed and things to go to that two bolt system for chain link fence. Um, otherwise, if you want to stick with, uh, you know, just your standard chain link fence option, you know, that's a point eight thousand dollar. So the six thousand would be in addition to if you wanted to, to do, you know, both options, bid and vote. Um, it would add extra cost, but it wouldn't add, you know. A significant amount of extra cost, like the heavier, bulkier railing, so.
Um, the six thousand would just give us the plan. For the, the bridge, it wouldn't cover the cost of the extra railing.
No, we would, we would bid that option out to get, so you'd have that cost, you'd have. You'd have the standard fencing cost, in addition, you'd have the more decorative option cost.
Don't.
To make a decision on which, which design you want to go with.
Got it.
Um, and this is just an example of, uh, of what that more expensive railing was. But again, we can't do that just because of the, um, you, you lose the width and so it's not an option. And at Bob's suggestion, um, you know, I put together these couple pros and cons and, and pictures just so you have a kind of a better understanding.
Hey Chuck, what's the structural integrity of that fencing right now?
Of what's out there?
Yeah.
Well, it's, you know, I can't say that definitively. It's forty years old and generally speaking, uh, fencing has a twenty-five to thirty-year life, so.
But is it structurally sound or is it absolutely need to be replaced? Because that, I was just wondering if it makes sense to, that it, it needs to be replaced or if it's still structurally sound?
It doesn't absolutely need to be replaced at this time? No. Um, now is the time to do it if you are to do something with that. Cause you're already working on the bridge and you don't, so you don't have to shut it down or shut a lane down a second time. So if you're gonna do it, now is the time, you know, you could also invest the money, get a design, bid it and make a decision at that time too, whether or not you wanna do the fencing now. But this is the time to do it if you're gonna do it.
Was the, was the fencing included in the original, um, budget that was either drawn up or proposed?
No. It was kind of after the fact, thought that, oh, you know, this isn't a condition, this isn't a state we should consider doing it.
How, what is our drop dead date for making a decision on what we wanna do with that? I mean, the bridge construction's gonna go forward regardless, correct?
I, I think your drop dead date to make a decision on this design is now. And the reason I say that is what we want to do is we want to bid this work concurrently with, um, the, uh, the DOT's Churchill project, okay? And so by doing it now, we can next month present final plans and specs, specs to you folks, get authorization for bidding, and then we would have the bid letting Valentine's Day, the same as the DOT is doing their project. So presumably the same contractors looking at that project will be looking at this bridge project.
So not to, I don't wanna be a dead horse here. How much is it gonna cost the village to, to have the design work done? Or to get us to a point where you guys?
An additional twenty thousand. Additional twenty thousand to do all that engineering to provide you with those options so you can make the decision next month.
But, but the, but the fence is still structurally sound. It could, it could last a while yet, right?
Uh, could you get another five years out of it presumably? You know, it just, you know, anecdotally, there's, you know, snowplow going across there with heavy equipment, it's, you know, it's, it's a forty-year-old fence.
But we either have to choose the, the chain link fence option with nothing for fourteen thousand, or we have to pay?
Twenty dollars.
For the other option.
Yeah.
And the other?
Or, or the option like that.
The other option is the one above it.
Well, the reason I'm, the reason I'm asking the question is I know it's a painful thing to shut lanes and stuff down, but we got some tids that are gonna be closing in a couple of years where we might have a little more money that we might be able to replace that bridge at that time, or at least use some of those funds for that.
Well, thank you for bringing that up, Donnie. One thing I wanted to point out to you in this, um, pros and cons here is, uh, you know, so, you know, this is a kind of cut to the chase. Um, I don't recall what, what did Andrea say at the last meeting, how much money you have in your bridge account?
Like one point eight million.
One point eight?
I'm not sure.
One, you spent some of that. I think it sounded like one point two or something. One point three?
One point three, if I remember.
They have one point three. And, you know, currently, you know, if we were to replace it today, uh, it's a four to five million dollar project to replace the bridge, okay? And, you know, assuming that the local bridge program is still available to you, um, you know, eighty percent of that would be funded through the DOT, which means you have to come up with eight hundred to a million dollars. At that time, you've replaced the entire bridge. Um, the, the objective of the project you're doing now is to get another twenty, thirty years. That's, that's the objective of the project, okay? So you don't have to deal with this, you know, for another twenty, thirty years. You, uh, you, you do that, that decking, the decking improvements and everything else, you button it up, so. Hopefully answers your question, Donnie, but you know, that's why doing the fence now would make sense from the standpoint is, you know, unless you think you can get another thirty years, twenty, thirty years out of that chain and fence, I don't think you will. But even if those tents closes, you'll have different pots of money, but currently you have a, a dedicated bridge account that you would pull these funds from.
Should we just replace the whole bridge instead of doing the decking?
No, I don't, I don't think at this time you would.
So we're putting, we're putting a Band-Aid on this thing for thirty years.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a significant amount of time.
Maintenance.
Maintenance. Cause if you, I mean, if you do the whole thing now, you know, thirty, forty years, you'd be maintaining it, right?
Sure, yep.
What kind of, uh, what kind of maintenance does the, does the chain link require now, if any?
Just annual inspections and then the state comes through every two to, to give a thorough inspection.
Yeah, that's, because it's a fracture critical, critical bridge and it's inspected every other year.
Well, the, the bridges is, is in inspected for structural integrity, right? Chain link is from keep, keeping people from bumping on side of it, so is that?
That's probably, that's probably, that's all, that's all part of the safety.
So three options are gonna be the fourteen thousand dollar option, the twenty thousand dollar option, or do nothing?
Yeah.
Okay, so there are three options.
And fourteen and twenty thousand respectively is just to have you guys do what you gotta do in order to go out and get.
and quote it.
Get the.
And then we're gonna pay for the fence on top of that.
Correct, correct.
And that fence, the, 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 the fence that you're talking about, you're saying, if I remember right, was gonna be substantially more than the chain link?
Not, not with this, not with the option I'm proposing today. It'll be very, it'll be similar to a chain link fence, it's just a, you know, uh, with, with some extra railing and, you know, across the top and things, so. It's, uh, it won't be significantly higher, but it'll be higher than just, to be a standard, standard.
More, more in engineering than, than actual, like you were talking three hundred thousand for that railing.
You know, and well, this, this will add another what? Thirty thousand or something to that cost? The overall cost of the fencing, I would guess.
But we don't know what the cost of the fencing is.
We don't know. I mean, yeah, we have estimates, but we won't know until it's bid.
What?
And we have real numbers.
What's ballpark?
Uh, what was it? A hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand for the chain length fence or was it two hundred and fifty thousand?
To do, to do both sides.
Hundred to a hundred and fifty for the chain length fence? And then you'll pay more than double that for the heavier duty fence, but this intermediate option will be, you know, whatever, twenty to fifty thousand dollars higher.
And so what you're looking for tonight is for the board to vote or to, to make a decision on what we wanted to do going forward to have you do?
Yep.
By Valentine's Day.
Yep, and then, then, then we'll come back with plans and, and then we'll put it out on the street and then on Valentine's Day, we'll open bids and you'll know what those costs are from these contractors and you, you'll either have, again, you'll have the option of saying, you know, we're gonna wait on the fence, we're gonna do the standard fence, or we're gonna do the, the, you know, the, with the decorative, you know, the additional rail fence.
The more, we're not gonna do anything.
Yeah. Quick question from the, the deck. The decorative top, is that something that can be done after the fact or does that have to be done with the design of the fence as it is?
It has to be done as the, it has to be part of the design because we'll have to modify the, uh, the anchoring system.
Okay, alright. Just wanted to make sure I understood that. I mean, from my standpoint, I think it's, it makes sense to make a decision on it. It's kinda do something, get off the pot type of thing, you know, not really punning on that, but, but at the same point, weaken him and how over this, it shouldn't be that big of a deal and now's the time to do it, we'll get probably our best. My guess would be best pricing from the standpoint of someone bidding it out. They have all the work, the vehicles, the stuff is there, the people are there. It's better to do that now than to try and now have it split out, you know, from a business standpoint, it just doesn't make sense to split them.
Uh, Brandon Crow makes a motion to move forward with, uh, option two for the twenty thousand dollars to, um, invest in the fence with the railing.
Do you have seconds?
I'll check, I second.
Oh, any further discussion?
Any further discussion?
And just so the board is clear, that will authorize MSA to do a redesign on the anchoring system for the bridge. And then they will put it out for bid for a normal chain link. Or the, the coated.
Poly coated, yeah.
And then the poly coated plus the railing. So it'll be two designs that are RFP.
And, and that would also give us the ability to be able to say, okay, do this fence, but we don't have to do any of the decorative top or any of that stuff. We can just build a fence with that in mind at some point if we might wanna do it today right now. That's possible.
No, 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 because it, it's gonna be, the bid is gonna be structured in ways, so it's two bolt system with one more chain link for poly coated chain link. And then if you adopt Brandon's motion, you're also authorized in MSA to do a bridge design that will have a four.
No, two bolts, a modified two bolt system with that extra rail on the top. Anybody else? Motion on the table?
Motion in a second.
Motion in a second?
All in favor.
All in favor of option two? You could just probably say approval of amendment number one as presented?
Allow me to rephrase. Um, approval of option.
Amendment number one.
Line amendment number one.
Would you make, would you make an amended motion, Brandon?
Yes.
To have it, make motion at all. Amendment number one as presented.
Motion to adopt amendment number one as presented.
Need a second? Yep. So Chris is in your second amendment?
Under Robert's rules, isn't, uh, the seconder have to, uh, uh, second the amended motion?
Do you consent to the, uh, amended motion?
He, he just did.
And you seconded it though?
Yeah, he did, Donnie.
So, yeah.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear that, sorry.
Yep. Any further discussion?
Any further discussion?
All in favor?
All in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Hi, all opposed?
Nay.
Any, who was?
Uh, doesn't matter.
Donnie? Motion is passed?
Yeah, five to one.
Five to one. Thank you. Okay. Andrew. Hope safety, uh, discussion and possible approval of the DAC impound agreement.
I don't think we really had more discussion on that from last time.
Yes.
Everyone's pretty good.
In one that we've had.
Yep.
Yeah. Wanna get them? Both of them doing it?
Yep. Yep.
In motion.
Chris Marino will make a motion to approve the DAC impound agreements.
Brandon Crow second.
Most men put forward it been seconded. Any further discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All is opposed? I have it, most of them scared. Okay, what is next? The discussion, what's next? Uh, discussion, possible approval, twenty twenty-three budgets, TID three, four, and five funds.
Uh, Brandon Crow moves approved the twenty twenty-three budgets, TID three, four, and five funds.
As presented?
As presented.
Chris Marino will second.
Uh, motion.
There's motion in second.
And a second. Any further discussion?
I have discussion on that. Were those numbers revised on Andrea that was talked about, um, at the working meeting? They, they said they were incorrect and they were gonna get new numbers, but I never got a, uh, notice on that.
There is updated and correct numbers now, Donnie, yes.
Yeah, that was sent out. On the meeting.
The updated version?
The updated one.
So those are the updated numbers that are in this, in this, in the packet then?
You have those, Donnie?
I'm just asking if you guys have verified them as well?
Yeah, I took a peek on, uh, stuff that came through yesterday. I don't have many.
I mean, without the treasurer there to ask questions on them, are we gonna approve them? Or is it necessary? Can we table them until, uh, we've had a chance to, to ask more questions on them or?
No, you, you need to pass them, I think, this month.
They have to be approved on this, in this meeting then?
Believe so. From here, yep.
Donnie, do you have it noted exactly which one it was on there in your notes?
I probably have in my.
Yeah, there was that sixty-five thousand dollar one in twenty, uh, twenty twenty, I believe. And that, she said those numbers were wrong because the numbers went down for the tax revenue and TID four, I believe.
Yeah, I don't see a sixty-five hundred in there.
Sixty-five thousand.
Well, I thought the question was the two numbers for twenty twenty-two, twenty-three or the two twenty, I think it was twenty twenty-two and twenty-three were the two that were the incorrect numbers on the top right on the, I don't remember the page off the top of my head. Those are the ones that she said were entered in incorrectly.
So, twenty twenty-two actual other taxes?
It was TID five.
It's seventy, two hundred dollars that won there. That was, uh, additional collections from people that failed to meet their incentive requirement. So I, that's confused Felicia a little bit, so Andrew and I worked that out. It was pretty simple. Um, and everything.
Yeah, that's right. I got the, I got the incorrect one from the last meeting. It looks like I see it on TID five, wherever I see it. TID five, and it is correct. Hold on, I have a big bag of Stein. I don't know if you can see.
Yeah, I can see it.
Okay.
These will be out at the, at the end of the year, just for your awareness.
Okay, so you have a motion and a second.
Your motion and second. Donnie, you got anything else?
I just want, yeah, I just wanna make sure, cause I, uh, they had mentioned they were gonna give them to me and I hadn't to, to review them, and I think they came in the packet yesterday, so.
Yep, they're in there. Any, any, any other discussion? Motion on the table?
All in favor?
All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion is passed. Um, the, the one, is that accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, next up, twenty twenty-three budgets for water and sewer.
I don't think we had anything on that or any further comment in the working session. Uh, Brandon Crow motion to approve the twenty twenty-three budget, water and sewer.
Second.
As presented?
As presented.
Chris Marino will second. Motion been put forth and seconded. Any further discussion on the twenty twenty-three water and sewer budget? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is carried. Uh next up, employee performance evaluation process. Doug?
So I know this was brought up a few years ago or a year and a half ago, whatever it was, um and I think the whole thing we wanted to just look at with this is. Let's see if we do have a process in place. Um if we do, then we can, we need to start reviewing and look into what we need to do with it. If we don't. Then uh start looking at devising one to say, okay, what do we wanna do, when and how? Um both from the employees underneath. Uh the leadership within Village Hall and then also for um the appointed positions. Bob, do you know if there's something that already exists or?
Yeah, there is a process, so yeah, employee evaluations are done by department heads. Uh for their respective um. Employees that are working underneath them and. Uh the finance personnel used to be um the ones that would conduct performance evaluation for department heads. And those occur on an annual basis.
Who are the job?
When you say used to be, Bob, uh did you say, you know, cuz I noticed in the minutes it said that they were, that there was a, uh you know, procedure for. Evaluations when we were discussing wages, Todd, I think, brought up last, last meeting, and I was wondering if uh. If uh that that process for um evaluating that the the the. The department heads getting the evaluations, is there something in in writing on that or something like that? Because uh I I. Uh new to this and well, it was the first I heard that it wasn't being done, so that's.
Not on my end, Donnie, I I don't know where evaluations are with other departments. I know the police department's unionized, so theirs is different. Um Hall of Fame chose to conduct with department heads was up to the board at that time, so. I don't really have an answer to it.
Who, so who are the, who are the department heads?
So Andrea, Felicia, myself, Joel. Uh but I don't know if Joel even even counts, uh Colleen maybe, I'm not sure. Yeah, sure, the department heads are, I don't know, lean, being that she's a clerk of court, she's. She's included in our department head meetings, I don't know if they recognized her and did evaluations on her.
When was the last time that you had a review?
Uh not this year, but prior year.
You did it?
Um one individual on the board.
Was it the, like, the head of public works or was it the village president or?
Public.
Just historically, is that the appropriate thing to do? I mean. All of us are fairly new.
Right, so our handbook would state the finance personnel committee, which kind of got combined with the work. Session. So I don't know if there's an opportunity to pull out uh finance personnel at a, at a certain time to do evaluations or not, or. Did the, just let the board do the evaluations, which. I'm fine with that, speaking for myself. If if that's.
And others, correct me if I'm wrong, I think that's something we could still do, we could have a a a separate meeting, we just have to put notice on that we're having it. Obviously, it would be, I assume it would be a closed door, at least for part of it or all of it. To go through, but we could still do that even though we have the meeting of the whole for the workshops.
Yeah, I mean, if the board is gonna look at the performance and evaluation data, that's proper for closed session. Uh you may not want to have the entire board do evaluations, um. Not to be a a glass, half-empty guy, but. Um if there's a problem with an employee or a department head. Um and the whole board is doing the evaluation and discussing it, uh I just, I'd probably caution against that. Um that approach, and so that's where I think it makes sense to have. The head of whatever committee. Or uh who's traditionally been the head of the committee, depend what you guys decide to do with that committee of the whole. Um it's better to have one person or or a subcommittee do that rather than the whole board, in my opinion.
Go correct, correct me if I'm wrong, and I know this is a little bit off the tail, but uh the the. President has been calling a committee of the whole for these last two meetings. By by his nature, we haven't changed anything, we could eff- essentially what, you know, go back to a finance. Uh and having the finance do that, if is that right, where we could go back to? The finance committee and those those chairs of the, you know, that sit in the finance would do their evaluations and then report back to the board?
Yes, Donnie, uh this is Anders, uh yeah, r- right now, again, it's been kind of a test run the last two months with that committee of the whole approach. Uh still in your ordinances, you still have personnel, finance, public safety, and public works committees. Um and their delegated responsibilities are in the ordinance, so.
Um so I do think it's still good to have some, even though we're at the same meeting, to have different delegated responsibilities, cuz take, for instance, like. I personally enjoy working with the pub, on the public work side of things. Uh I'm not really as enthused about the um. Obviously, safety is important and all that, but the police side of it, that's and that, and then the other finance side of it, I'm not quite as interested in as I am with the. The public works, and then I ha- have a lot more contact with Bob and. Um and I usually, most of my calls are directed to him, you know, on the public works um specifically. It also frees me up to think of like public works. Type issues, I guess, I'm more focused on, you know, water.
Right, and and Brandon, that's kind of been my thought on this since we started doing the committee of a whole is to have. Still have people that are delegated for those areas so that the public knows who to go to, the. Employees of those know who that they need to go to, instead of just picking one of six or seven people on the board to go to. They can take and have more dedicated people to understand these are people, this is area of focus, if you will, so that's still my plan. If we keep doing the committee of the whole or not, I would still envision myself, I would envision us continuing that.
So back to, back to the I uh agenda item here, how often do these uh these evaluations, is it? Once a year, annually, every six months? And eh you know, I I guess it, if there's a a formal process, do we need to have the the finance, maybe finance committee sit down and evaluate that process?
Yeah, I'll look at doing that this month. Sorry, this next month, I think that we should set up a meeting to do that, Donnie.
Is it possible, uh Bob, can you send us your guys' last set of reviews? So we could just look at them, see the format, stuff like that, I'm doing reviews right now, we're gonna, that's one of the biggest things, just kind of looking at the past goals and seeing what you guys had already laid out and. If you guys already have a format that works for us, then we could just. Yeah, go with that.
Is there a, is there a legitimate reason why? So so Doug, who's the president, and Donnie's the the head of public works and Chris, public safety, those are the three that really should be involved, correct? Do they need full?
Yeah.
We need to do full board or is that normal?
No, it's not normal unless we have a a situation with an employee that would be put on a, a proven plan. Um of some nature, and that it might be something where the board elects to have a quarterly review to see. How that employee is is performing.
But that's, that's an outlier, that's not the norm, right?
That's not the norm.
Okay, so is that appropriate for Doug and Chris and Donnie? To form committee and go through the review process?
Uh I'm sorry, who's on personnel and finance again?
Uh department head or the chairman of the person, uh the public works.
Been a while since you've all met, oh, sorry, I don't.
Donnie.
Okay. Um. Yeah, I mean, personnel finance can meet to to discuss the eval process, okay? And if there needs to be changes to the handbook to have more frequency or some other delegation of responsibility, then you provide your employee handbook.
It sounds like we need to review what we already have on file somewhere for the review process. We have the review process somewhere, please share that with us, and we'll go over what we already have in place, we'll also review the old reviews. From to see if we like that and what goals have been set up, put out. Um and then based on that, we can. W- we don't have, oh, do we need to have another meeting before the end of the year, or we just wanna say we still. We're doing reviews next year.
Um Doug?
I I think that, as we said, or as has been said, I think we'll just schedule a meeting for Chris, myself, and Donnie. In January to go over the process, what we have, Bob can send us the information, we can look through that stuff. And determine where we're at to make, you know, kind of go through the reviews, figure out our our plan of attack. I mean, I would, being that I've heard the uh statement was it hasn't been done in two years. So, yeah, I mean, I think it'd be nice to have this done um in the first quarter, if at all possible, to get, you know, at least get caught back up and then. Look to doing that in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty-three and every year going forward, got a plan for that. That's my thought.
Yeah, you don't wanna, I would, I would advise against rushing the year-end evaluation process at this point, otherwise. Um evaluation process isn't really worth much. And okay, just saying, everyone's, everyone's great, if and if there are issues, you know, they identified.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll need to get more information to follow up on that. I don't, and I think, um I know I have talked to Felicia about and Andrea about this, and they're. They do wanna be reviewed, it's not like they don't wanna be reviewed, so, all right, we wanna give you guys feedback and.
Yeah.
Um it'll be good.
So there is any.
Nothing else would be needed on that topic.
Okay. Uh next up is the. Fire and rescue monthly report for November twenty-two.
Josh, Josh on the line, is he gonna read it out?
It appears everything uh is up to standards and accurately reflects what's going on up ahead of them.
No, as.
Assistant, as always.
Perfect, Josh.
Thank you, Josh. Um, so moving on to unfinished business. Um the meeting attendance resolution that was put forward November of last month, or excuse me, November of. Last month of this year, sorry.
Is there anything changed from the working meeting on the language on that?
Doesn't look like it.
Looks like it's the same.
Yeah.
Donnie Curran make a motion to approve the orders.
Chris Marial second.
Motion been put forth and seconded, any further discussion?
You can only screw it up sometimes.
Okay, all, all those in favor?
Hi.
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 All opposed? Motion is carried. Um next up is the discussion and possible approval of. Ordinance A six seventy-nine um if it relates to sewer, water and sewer credit.
Uh for the board, um this is, uh this was revised consistent with your discussions uh at the working group meeting. Where the public works director can give that one-time sewer credit. Uh which is not to exceed the lesser of two hundred dollars in amount, which is equal to fifty percent of the past twelve months monthly average. Um and then uh if the amount of the uh. The leak is more than that, say, two hundred dollar amount, uh the individual can appeal that to the board.
Well, this obviously would. Um they wouldn't be able to get the one-time credit if there was any type of tampering or anything. Right, they, with any type of devices, they wouldn't be able to get a one-time credit.
It would be situational, um about everything, like, have to be documented, this is, this is mainly for. Someone's basement toilet that they never go to or it's been running, but they didn't know it was running, you know, it's a massive big bill, and they just weren't aware of it. And they correct the problem. It's it's more for uh malfunction and informing. That was unknown to a resident and it ran all month and they had a. A huge um utility bill that there's some relief. Provided for them. You know, under the stipulations that their accounts are in good standing. Um and then again, it's a one-time. One-time um credit, okay.
And the whole call had been established, right? That process has been established.
It's it's a looser process right now, and this adds a little bit more firmness to it, you know, gives Bob a little bit more guidance on the max that he can give, and then if someone wants to um. Seek more than the max in the or- in the ordinance, they can come to the board. So, but it gives Bob that opportunity to issue the credit and and just use it in his professional res-. Are you good with that, his professional judgment?
Okay.
Donnie had some.
Chris, Donnie.
Did Donnie uh ever do anything bad on that?
I'm good, I I I think that uh if the individual wants to uh approach the uh the uh public works committee. And appeal to the public works committee, if it's over that that threshold, that one, it's a smoother process to deal with it. Uh if it's, you know, under that threshold, but if it's over that threshold, they still have an avenue to be able to seek a remedy. Not saying it's going to be approved, but they still have an avenue to seek for remedy.
Okay.
This is Doug Lottie make a motion to approve the ordinance as presented.
Chris Marial second. He's on it today.
Motion put, been put forth and seconded, any further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 I, all opposed? Motion carried. All right, so we have uh discussion. And possible approval appointment of trustee vacancy um. Versus keeping the trustee position open until April election. Uh per Wisconsin statute. Discussion.
Has it, has there been any, has there been anybody else that has uh seeked any interest? I haven't received anything other than Mike Cappers.
I don't, I haven't seen anything beyond um beyond my.
Nope, not that I've heard.
Okay, then I make a motion to appoint uh Mike Cappers to the board. For the balance of that term.
Motion been put forth, is there a second? What happens now?
Uh call it again, see if there's a second.
Is there a second? Now what?
Without a second, the motion dies.
We'll see.
Can I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna charge it there, close here.
So um it also says keep trustee position open until April election, is that something that needs discussion from the board?
Is there, so the motion is, was, has died, there wasn't a second. Um. I- is there any other discussion on keeping the position open until the April election?
A minute, the minutes reflected that the bo- that the trustee position was going to be filled on the uh at this meeting. From last month's uh meeting, that's why I made the motion. Uh of the individuals that's uh residents that self was seeking uh the the position, but. Uh without a second, I guess uh I think it should still stay open until somebody's interested. That would get a second.
The reason that I put on there, the option for that, to keep it open is just from the standpoint of. Right now, we're at three months left until the election, uh if we wait until the next meeting, it's January, they get in, there's two months left. In order to get them set up with email, do all this stuff, and whether they get elected in in April or not. It's. Is it worth it, is it, well, I mean, it's obviously worth it to make sure we get um input from the community. Um I just don't know that it's value-added at this point. From the standpoint of just going through it, and that's fine, and you can, I'm just saying this is what's there. And that's an option to us granted by the state statute.
Sure.
So that's a town.
Yeah, I would, I.
Make the decision.
Yeah, I think.
And I feel like that's a good idea.
I agree, we're close enough to the election that we can even make it and let them.
I think the town should.
Or they want. They're deciding, he can run, then.
Yeah, so you, so you have the authority under the statutes to keep it open, if you wanna keep it open.
I, Donnie Curran make a motion to keep the it open until, until uh if there's anybody else expressing interest, because if somebody does, it shouldn't preclude them to. Close it off saying that the position is not clo- uh not, not available.
Well, I mean, I just feel like, if we don't appoint him, then we shouldn't appoint anybody else. Well, I, I just feel like, if we don't appoint him, then we shouldn't appoint anybody else. Point of clarification, so Donnie, when you say you're making a motion to keep it open, does that mean?
Sub- subject to whoever, uh, whoever, uh, seeks interest, the trustees shouldn't be handcuffed to saying, well, it's not open anymore now.
Well, it's, it's, it's technically, when they say it's open, it means they're leaving the seat open and unoccupied until April. That's what, that's what leaving it open means.
Which means it's unavailable for anybody to, to, uh, be filled in that position.
Right, and so you had said, your motion was to.
So if Greg Sayers, I'm just saying, somebody like Greg Sayers said, I would be interested in running for a trustee position, we'd, we'd turn him away and I don't wanna. I don't wanna preclude anybody from, uh, any village resident for being interested in serving in the position if they so desire.
Greg wanted to be president.
I was using that as an example though, Brandon, is, it could be anybody out there that's a village, village person that would come to the board and say, hey, I, I'm interested. And we'd say, well, no, I'm sorry, we.
But like I say though, I mean, we're not gonna let him go on and we should.
We're close enough to the, okay, so you put a motion forward.
Is there a second to Donnie's motion? Which is a motion to keep it open unless open and available, not open and closed.
Okay, there's no second, so that one died too, so.
Brandon Crone make a motion to keep the, uh. Vacant trustee position open until the April election, where it will be filled by both.
Do we have a second? Motion been put forth and seconded to keep the, uh. The open trustee position vacant, um, until after the election in April. Um, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. I, all opposed? Guys have it, motion passed. We go on to new business, huh? Hey, new business, the, uh, the village has a YouTube channel, um, and.
You should all like and subscribe. Smash the like button.
We need to. We need to possibly put a, uh, a channel policy in place.
So I kind of, um, I just got it down some stuff to conversation stakes since we're gonna be talking about this, um. Um, and I just kinda went through some of the mechanics of it, um, and this is just kinda what I thought was, so. One board member, and I don't care, and that president or whoever inside, the board should decide, the one board member. To have control of YouTube posting and comment reactions. Um, if member is no longer able to serve, then responsibilities of managing the YouTube page would be transferred to trustee or village employee. Uh, determined by board vote, all comments will be allowed within the comment section, cannot be deleted. Uh, not all speech is protected by the First Amendment and any speech deemed not protected. By the First Amendment wouldn't be allowed, uh, there are also YouTube user guidelines that may supersede any guideline put for, put forth by the building board.
Yeah, and that's, that's my, uh, that's my, my only concern about leaving comments open. Is Google does not have the same views with the First Amendment that, that you do, for example. Yeah, and so, you know, that's my concern, not what somebody gonna say that gets them deleted, I, I don't know. But once you open up that forum and allow comments, um, you basically. You mostly have to allow everything, which is, is fine, but, uh, you just, it's, it can be a little bit more sticky. Uh, and you can run into more headaches.
Yeah, I'm not a big fan of just having it be a free for all, I just assume have it, hey, here's a thing where you have access to view it, review it. If they wanna talk to someone individually or they wanna complain about it or whatever, they can reach us through village email, through the village hall. Or through some other methods, I would, my personal self, I think we'd be in our best interest as a village. And as a board to just not have comments at all on that.
I'm a firm believer in freedom of speech and if we're, uh, you know, getting this out here for people and they wanna say it's a great idea. Or, or something like that, or if they wanna say it's a bad idea, uh, that's just another avenue that we can hear their, their voice. And, uh, I, I don't wanna preclude them from being able to, you know, give that opinion, I think, I think. Having comments open is, is just another avenue for, you know, opening up for freedom of speech. And what they say is, i- you know, unless it's absolutely in, interrogatory towards, towards us, but. I think there's, uh, guidelines that are, um, already, uh, brought up in regards to that. From the Supreme Court of the state of Wisconsin, if I remember right.
Donnie, um, this is honors, you make some, you know, really good points that, yeah, when, when you open up the comments. Uh, in terms of First Amendment things, it's, it's pros and cons on, you know, the, the, the decisions you make, those are completely fair game. Pros and, you know, criticizing elected officials, completely fair game. Um, what you get, what you kinda get, here's what I've seen with one town. Where they had a free for all and there was one chairman that didn't like. Being questioned about his competency and it wasn't, it was not bad at all, it was very. It was protected speech. And he had lone control over the, the website commenting on the, on the town website and he. Prohibited the person from speaking again, and then he deleted their comments, and then he deleted everyone's comments. So that's where, you know, my concern is not, you know. I am a huge First Amendment guy, and so that's where I like, I think more speech is great. And that, you know, you have the marketplace of ideas to sort it out. But if you're gonna go into a, you know, one board member decides what comments stay and what comments go. That's got other villages or other towns in legal hot water before, just not, not to. It, it, it just need to be careful with, and basically you let everything in unless it's pornography, um, that's, you know, like. Obscene material that, in that sense.
Pretty easy to control, I mean, it's all or nothing. Either you, and when you upload the video, it's either you click the button that says allow comments or don't allow comments when you upload it, so.
Yep, and the other, and the other item is for the board members, committee members, plan commission, you know, whoever is. You don't wanna be, um, making comments in the comment section replying on village business, otherwise you can have a quorum. And that can violate the open meetings law as well.
Yeah, I think really the only comment right on there right now is someone asked when the video was gonna be posted and it was like, oh, it'll be, should, we try to post them within twenty-four hours. If anyone is still watching, uh, we try to get them up within twenty-four hours, I don't know, is Andrea? Is Andrea on vacation? Or is, will you send this to me tomorrow? Can you send me the link?
I can't.
You can't?
Gonna have to wait until the next week. When we're done. She says, I can't, okay.
Perfect, cause yeah, people, I've gotten the only message, I think, I know Fran Boris is the one that gave the message, but. She had sent early in the morning on the following day, she wanted to know. Everyone on the meeting, so just wanna make sure that that's available, if possible.
So if I understand everybody, um, I guess at the end of the day, Google's gonna be a better babysitter and nanny. YouTube than anything that any individual could do, I would assume.
They'll never get me on the record saying that.
All I'm saying is I can't imagine something that they would allow. That would be against the law or put the village in a position that would get us in trouble.
They tend to be a little bit more restrictive.
No, but if we allow everything and it's out of our control, there's not much we can do about it anyway.
Well, that's why we say we would, we would go by the, we would try and go by First Amendment, but the.
So are. You don't wanna make case law.
Are you recommending, are you recommending that we kill all the comments on the YouTube video?
Nope, I'm just saying that, um, no, I, I'm not saying that at all, I'm saying. Just don't, don't start deleting comments. Okay, so, don't, don't limit people's ability to comment if you're gonna leave comments open. And, um, if there are. Prob- potentially problematic comments, please call the lawyer before, I don't care, we call in the lawyer.
I, I don't know if there are comments or not, right?
With this one town, it, you wouldn't expect, it was, it was a way up north. It's never gonna pop up, it popped up, and now they have a notice filed against them for.
Have you, you haven't had, you've had the comments open already?
Yeah, yeah, and I've only gotten one comment and she's actually online right now. Yeah, and she said she loves it.
Do, do we need to have a formal motion on this or, or, I mean, subject to, you know, the advisement of. You know, the attorney, I think, uh, it's great that nobody can delete comments, but I, I'm a strong believer, believer in the First Amendment. Taking that away from us on a municipality is not something I'm gonna ever be in favor of.
Agreed, agreed, yep, so.
I don't think anybody's not in agreeance.
I think, uh, the, the general, what it sounds like is the general consensus of the board is to allow. All comments that comply with the First Amendment, and if there's a question about a comment. Talk to legal counsel, just don't delete it.
So whoever's in charge of the account will talk to you, so right now, that's me, um. Things don't go well in April, I'll give it to whoever.
Yeah, and you know, you'll probably, you know, if, if you get comments criticizing you and you call. Call me and say, hey, can we delete this? You're not gonna like my answer because it's probably gonna.
I wanted to call you, cause I already know it.
Google could take the stuff off that they don't like, that, that's on them.
Right, that's, that, that, that absolves us from a lot of responsibility, I feel like their terms of service is gonna, I don't know how you get around that. If we're not taking anything down.
You know, if it's not the government actor doing it, you know, you, again, like I said, I, I don't recall any case law on this, so you don't wanna make it, but.
You don't wanna.
Well, I'm glad, I'm glad we had the, I'm so glad we had the conversation, is there, is there anything else we really need to do? The hand, I think we may need to vet out the handoff of the account because, you know, you never, if someone has control of the account and isn't in. That's why we may need to have one person who's elected have control of it and then someone who's works for the village. So at least two people, you know, someone who's semi-permanent and then someone who voted in.
At, at some point, you might want to put together a policy or a resolution that kind of serves as a guideline.
I can write up a little something, if, if you don't mind, I will step on your toes.
You don't need to do anything tonight.
Just keep the comments up.
Just keep the comments up if, if they're turned on.
Alright, any, any further discussion on that?
I'm a, I'm kind of a First Amendment able, absolutist. Yeah, I know.
Okay, there we go.
Get a lot coming, Donnie, Doug, Josh, anything else on that?
I'm good.
I just, I asked, but is there no, no sense, no need for a motion on that?
I don't believe so.
Uh, I ta- I'm taking an action item, I guess, uh, draft up a, a draft.
I think at, at maybe a subsequent, subsequent board meeting. There might be a policy that comes before the board to consider and adopt regarding the, the comment policy.
So I'll take, I'll, I'll take first crack at drafting that.
Okay, anybody got anything else before we move on? Alright, um. Next item is, uh, discussion, possible approval donating to Somerset Community Foundation.
So Andrea put this forth, right?
From the community foundation, um, I had it included on the agenda. For the point consideration.
Okay, I thought Andrea put it on now. Oh, but, okay, got, got it.
It originated from me, too.
You got the right guy?
That's not necessarily my decision, who the board feels that they should donate money to. Um, the board has. The right to donate to whatever civic groups. They would like to, we currently donate to, um, various civic groups, uh, in the community, uh, currently.
Which one do we, which one do we donate to right now, Bob?
Um, the Somerset Senior Center, the, the food show we've donated to. Uh, Somerset Chamber of Commerce, um. Alliance for P-Soup Days.
I, Donnie Curran make a motion, we donate two hundred fifty dollars to the, the foundation.
Donnie, can.
There, there's, there's a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Can I second amendment?
You can have a second and then discussion.
Uh, Donnie, I'll second, but can we, can we talk about the amount?
Yeah, yeah.
I think we give the food pantry five hundred dollars or, or excuse me, the senior center five hundred dollars annually, um, I. Feel that number's come down from the past, don't quote me on that, I think we used to be in a, I think it's come.
I think we should do seven fifty then. At least.
I think five hundred.
Five hundred? Donnie, are you, um, it's been proposed seven fifty and five hundred.
So. This is my, this is my, my fiscal budget hat coming on here now, and this is where I'm like, okay, what? What do we have kind of in our budget for doing this kinda stuff? That's why I said two fifty because. That I know there was money in the budget when we reviewed it for that, I don't know if there's enough in the budget for. You know, seven fifty or five hundred, this year, this year, I'm gonna say, this year, the foundation is a great thing, don't get me wrong. I'm not trying to take money away from them, I just wanna make sure that we're accounting for it properly, that's all. And so, and my question, that's my question, is, is, is there a number, is it in the budget where we can, we can account for that?
Let me offer this, if seven hundred fifty is too much and we are short. I'll find it.
I think collectively.
If it means coming out of my own. We would be able to find that amount of money, um, we did have a substantial savings with a few things.
Yeah, the Todd Streeter savings.
They do stuff with kids too, correct?
Yeah, they, yeah, they did with the Boy Scouts last year, they donated twelve hundred.
Well, I.
Well, maybe we should give them more, we saved, we saved a ton of money on that Todd Streeter deal.
Also, you're thinking of Todd Streeter savings money for, so, just.
Bob is five hundred, five hundred, uh, a good number, it would be kinda comfortable, same as the senior citizens.
I'll support that, I.
I'll amend my motion to donate the, the foundation five hundred dollars.
Chris Murrell second, are you okay with the, uh, the amended the five hundred?
Motion put forward donating five hundred bucks to Somerset Community Foundation. All, all in favor? All opposed? Motion is carried.
You're nice, thank you.
Thank you.
Do they have the, the.
We receive money from the community foundation to help with the, the cost of those.
The community foundation has a competitive grant program, so people can apply. And then we have all this criteria of how many people will serve in the area to help define which, uh, grant applicants are. Received money.
You're talking my language over here, you know, Bob, you know, talking, saying the G word. Oh, gosh, you know, I love that G, I love the D word.
And next year, you will all be invited to our celebration of giving, so we hold a celebration in December where we hand. And next year, you will all be invited to our celebration of giving, so we hold a celebration in December where we hand the money to the grant recipients. And they talk about what their programs are and how they're going to use those funds and who's going to be impacted, it is a great. Deal, it's a fabulous part, so.
Can't wait to see that, we'll be there, I'll be there.
Yep, okay, um, next item, and finally, village water and sewer bill. Let's get over this one thing, we've been saying.
It's been a while. Yeah, it's same staples.
I didn't tell, I didn't have any questions on these, I looked at it at work.
Donnie, did, did you have any issue with the water sewer bill?
Is that a motion, Chris?
What was that, a motion?
Sure.
Group, Brandon Crown second.
Motion been put forward, through village water and sewer bills, uh, is there any further discussion? No further discussion, all those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 All opposed? Meeting is carried. Meeting adjourned.
I'm not. It sounds like that was a motion to adjourn by.
Second.
Sorry, guys, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Seconded.
Yeah.
Good job, Todd.
Hey, thanks guys, sorry, it was choppy.
What time is your journey now?
Oh, yeah, what time is it?
Seven thirty-eight.
Holy cow, that's a new, and a new record.
Got to add her pretty quick.
If I mean your boss on here.
Merry Christmas, everyone.
Merry Christmas.
Thanks, everyone.
Take care. Yeah, bye.
Dude, that was horrible, but I, I wouldn't screw it up this bad.
You're right, it was.